We're having audio issues, so I'm just gonna speak loudly so everybody can hear me. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. If you can hear me in the back row, just nod. Alright. We're gonna call this meeting to order. I welcome and good evening to all to the City of Ixani City Council Meeting for Tuesday, December 20th. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, we have heard from Councilman Collison that he will not be here this evening. Councilman Lundin is en route. He's just running a little late. Is there any public comment at this time? If so, feel free to stand up to the podium here and state your name and address for the record. Not at this time. Do we have any agenda modifications, Ms. Wood?
No, Mayor, we do not. Good evening.
Good evening to you as well. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt. Second?
Motion to adopt the agenda by Councilman Burgley and seconded by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries three zero. Proclamations, commendations, and certified awards. We have years of service awards. A five-year would be Donald Hanson, Park and Rec. Is Mr. Hanson here? There he is. Mr. Hanson, if you wouldn't mind stepping forward, sir. In my hand, I have a certificate of recognition for Mr. Hanson that recognizes him for his five years of service. We highly appreciate you, sir. You've done one heck of a job. And you haven't ruined too much, so that's been the best. This is yours, sir. And do the, does the paper want some pictures there?
If so, give her a group shot, please.
Alright. So when I call everybody up, Mr. Hanson, if you wouldn't mind coming up, taking a photo. We appreciate you, sir. Thank you. Also, five years of service is our wonderful finance director, Mr. Michael Becker. You know the drill, Mr. Becker. He also gets a certificate recognizing him for his five years of service, and in hopes there is many more, sir. Also, Mr. Becker, when there is a group photo, if you wouldn't mind stepping forward, it'd be highly appreciated. Not in attendance today is also five years is Katie Grady. She's our human resource. Tabitha Pelteer, she is our, what the heck would we call her? Utility billing gal. And then Keith Lusk, our liquor store. Uh, he's the manager now, is he not?
Yeah.
And he's not here either? This is the big one. Thirty years of service goes to Penelope Penny Anderson at the police department. That concludes the years of service that we have thus far. So if you two gentlemen wouldn't mind standing forward for pictures to the paper, that would be highly appreciated. Mr. Hanson? Mr. Becker? Step forward and up here, Mr. Hanson. You guys wanna move out of the picture? It's all about them, not us. It's them, not us. That's who I like to see in the paper, John, not me.
I won't take that personally. If you gentlemen are ready, on the count of three, one, two, three. One, oh, he saw that. One, two, three.
Ms. Hanson, you wanna step forward and take that photo? You feel free, young lady.
Thank you both. Congratulations.
Thank you again, gentlemen. Also, Chief, you're gonna have to jar my memory on this, remembering the fallen Officer Marshall Frank Dolan.
So on December 21st, 1926, Marshall Frank Dolan shot and killed and we interrupted a burglary at a potato warehouse. Two men arrested months later. He charged with martial assault, several robberies, David Tony's, and a murder, a cashier, a bank robbery. November, they both were convicted of murder and sentenced to life prison. He served at the Ixani Police Department for one year, was survived by his wife and steps down. So that was December 21st tomorrow, 1926.
Because I'm a huge advocate of public safety, law enforcement especially. Right, I'm Chief, I'm glad you brought that forward, number one. Number two, let's just take a moment of silence for Officer Dolan. Thank you, everybody. Much appreciated. Move on to a approval of the city council minutes for December 6th, which is a regular meeting of city council, and December 6th, a canvas board meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Burgley, seconded by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries three zero. Announcements. City offices will be closed Friday, December 23rd, and Monday, December 26th, in observation of Christmas. Is that everybody?
City Hall.
Just City Hall?
Uh, Public Works also, PD Works, the restaurant works, but City Hall is closed.
Why does Public Works work?
Public Works is not at work.
Oh, they're off? Friday and Monday? Friday, Monday, they're off with their on-call. Okay, that makes sense. Uh, city council meeting will be Monday, January 9th at 7:00 PM. An economic development meeting will also be Monday, January 9th, immediately following that city council meeting. Any council committee reports? We have city council here. We do have a public hearing, a resolution approval of the sale for the EDA and city-owned land to Midcontinent Communications.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, we do have a public hearing tonight for the city and EDA-owned land parcel in the newly added Ixani Railview North Industrial Park. And the purchaser is here. Company, if you have any questions to ask them.
We normally ask the purchaser to step forward if you gentlemen wouldn't mind. Just in case us or any of the public have any questions for you. State your name and address for the record, if you wouldn't mind, gentlemen.
Uh, Tony's work. I live on National Street in Blaine.
I'm Casey Morris. I live in Cambridge here on Opportunity.
This would be a good opportunity for you across the home, huh? How many people do this Midcontinent plan on employing at this location?
We have about sixty-six employees currently right now, so.
And are those mostly in Cambridge-Ixani area?
It's, well, it's kinda spread out. So we have an area over Forest Lake, but that's our meeting center is where they come. So for meetings, a lot of the field techs will come to the office at least once a week to there, but that was probably probably about forty of them, or how's that without?
I don't have take-home vehicles anyway if they're techs, right?
Yep, they do. So we try to keep them where they, where they live and where they work, so I'm trying to keep them in that area.
I have these guys, so I'm gonna be asking a bazillion questions. I know, uh, my tech, he lives right here in Ixani.
Okay.
Oh, I can't remember that guy's name to save my life. He is the only guy that I've ever seen come to my home.
Matt Bartizol?
Uh-uh. You say it, I'm gonna know it. He's an older gentleman, African-American gentleman.
Oh, he doesn't, uh, he left a couple of years ago.
Did he really?
Yeah, Ben. Ben Flemester, yeah.
Yeah, it was Ben.
Yep. No, he was a good guy. He went and was trying different opportunities, so.
Well, that's too bad.
Yeah, no, it was sad to see Ben go.
Well, hopefully I wish that man well. I'll have to, oh, to catch up with him.
Yeah.
He was a good character. Any questions you gentlemen have? Somebody might, so.
Okay, fair enough.
I appreciate you guys answering the few that I have. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Just have a seat in front of all guys.
Mike Ackland, I'm at 298-92.
Can you step up here, sir?
Right.
Yes, sir.
I guess, I'm just up to the north, and it's kinda, I got the letter.
What was your name and address? Did you guys get that?
It's Mike Ackland.
I know who you are, but they don't.
29836 Jackson Street, to the north. And I guess I got the letter, but it's kinda unclear which parcel this is.
This is north of the soccer fields.
Yeah.
The southernmost parcel.
The southern of the, of the four lots?
Yes, yep.
So it's number four then, not number one, because I think they're, you haven't numbered?
Yeah, you told us one. Yeah, so it's the northernmost.
Yeah, because that, okay. So you guys are on the north corner up there? Okay, I just was kinda wondering which one. And I guess that was my main concern.
It was the southernmost lot.
So is it four or is that one?
It is four.
All the records that we, I currently have from Stephanie is lot one, so it's not gonna change our, our plans by any means, because they're all the same billable lots.
Four's, four's closer to you, is it not, Mr. Ackland?
I'm in the middle.
Okay.
Right in about the middle of those four. And I don't know, I guess I just was a little more curious as to what was really going on. And which lot and whatever, because I in fact, Stephanie bought it a few times. So we're sort of interested in maybe one of the lots possibly.
Okay.
So that's kinda what I'm here.
Okay.
So, but I, what I heard was there's gonna be sewer coming across, and will that be before anything is done, or?
Yep.
Any building or any, I mean, what's the timetable of this?
The timetable for utilities will be September of next, of 2023.
So it'll be quite a while.
Yeah, we'll take this, okay, for engineering.
Oh, for sure. I guess I just needed a little, I wanted a little more information, but that's all, so. Okay.
Fair enough. Appreciate your time, sir.
So it is lot four, but closest to the soccer fields.
Sorry, yes.
Do you guys know that?
Duly noted. Lot four.
I heard that was more valuable.
But definitely lot four.
Anybody else that'd like to speak on this matter, please feel free to step forward, state your name and address for the record. Let the record show, Councilman Lundin has shown. Right on top, I said fifteen minutes. He made it fourteen, so he's got a minute to spare you. Nobody else that wants to speak on this matter? I'll close the public hearing at this time. Any questions by the council?
I'd also like to mention that a motion should also include action for the development agreement, which is included with this project, which includes the purchase price of the 118 for the lot, as well as the total build out for the infrastructure for all four sites, which is $598,650, um, $262,450, which will be paid by Midcontinent Communications through the development agreement to pull to, to that parcel, that southernmost parcel, as well as the total, um, from the markup of the three other parcels, which will include $112,066 each, um, for the remaining $336,200. So I just wanted to be clear that that's in the development agreement, and I know it's been mentioned, was mentioned at the economic development authority meeting, and the EDA did recommend to move forward with this.
And Mayor, if I may, just to make it clear on the record in the purchase agreement, it will need to be revised with your motion if that is, this is approved to lot four, lot four, lot one, PID 16.161.0040.
Anything else? Well, that's a heck of a lot to remember. I'm look, I'm looking for a motion for.
I think you gotta close the public hearing, don't you?
I already did.
Oh, you did.
Uh, looking for a motion for the approval of the sale of the EDA and city-owned land to Midcontinent Communications with the development agreement of lot four. And whatever else.
And the resolution.
And the resolution.
I'll move that we approve the sale of lot four, along with the resolution. And development agreement.
I'll second that. I have a motion from Councilman Burgley to move forward with the sale and the development agreement and resolution, and seconded by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Business items. In ordinance amending chapter 256 residential property maintenance standards.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So staff's requesting that we amend ordinance 758, which is codified, codified as the code as chapter 256, which is our rental code. Um, staff's requesting that the rental licenses be changed instead of being due on December 31st to June 1st. There are a number of issues that are out of staff's control. We are trying to, and we have licenses due at the end of the year. We also are required to do an inspection at that time, and doing them in winter has quite a few, um, issues that come up and becomes troublesome and tricky for not either staff to schedule with weather and getting landlords to come up and such. So we're requesting that it be moved to June 1st, uh, for both license renewal date and inspections. And this ordinance draft has been posted for the required ten days, and staff is recommending approvals.
I thought she said January 1st at once. Well, what difference does it make?
She said June.
June, yeah, I caught that the second time.
We had the discussion earlier before, didn't we?
I think so.
Yeah. I think more should approve.
Well, I had one, one question. So what was gonna happen then with that, is because they paid their license last time through the end of this year, and then you have six months where there's not gonna be any charge, or we're gonna go back?
Right. There would not be any charge. It will just extend. This is similar to what we did in COVID when we couldn't get out there either. We just extended their license, so they would get until June 1st.
That's not a huge financial loss to the city, the, okay. So I'll second that.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and seconded by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Moving on to the city engineer. Authorizing engineer services for the 2023 pavement management project. You wanna do both of these, Jason, or one at a time?
Three of them. But I guess we do one at a time.
Okay. Take first one, wait.
So the first one is just to do the 2023 pavement management project, just continuing our regular maintenance program. Um, this here, there's the figure attached from the capital improvement plan. Um, we're doing the area in the south in purple. Um, it's generally Ixani Meadows, Ixani Trail, Whisperage, Second Edition, Deer Haven, and South Park developments. Um, we'll evaluate them for whether seal coat is the proper treatment, or if there's any melanoma they needed, uh, spot curb replacement, ADA compliance for pedestrian ramps and sidewalks, basically our same program we've been doing for the last so, how many years? Seven years-ish now, so. It was just to continue maintaining our program to stay ahead of, uh, our street's condition.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and seconded by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Resolution authorizing a engineer service for the water tower coating improvements.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So this is the, um, item that was discussed at the, uh, last committee meeting on water tower coatings and the direction we wanna go. So now we're bringing the fee proposal to do those, I guess, first task is the, the design through bidding, like the two different options of a full replacement of the coating of the exterior tower as opposed to spot replacement. Uh, both options would include the full removal and replacement of the interior wet surfaces and partial coating and replacement of interior dry surfaces. So that dual bid that we discussed is simply to get that difference in spot repair and exterior coating versus full removal and replace.
Since we get that bid, then the decision will be decided which way to go. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Yep, so we bid both options. We get the numbers in, we find out how dramatically different they are, and whether one's that much more cost-effective or not, and then you'd be able to elect which way to go. Um, I do have included in here, uh, the fee difference on the construction side, that if that, um, that spot repair on the outside was selected, that our inspection and construction management fees would be somewhere in that five to six thousand dollars less than if the full replacement was done. So more or less, at, at that time, once the decision's made, that cost can be factored in as well for what the best, you know, cost-effective solution is based on bids.
You guys continue on, does that make sense to you? Sounds good to me. I'll, I'll make a motion for it.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Burgley and seconded by Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Resolution authorizing engineer services for the wellhead protection plan, part two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So, so this is a ten-year required update to the wellhead protection plan, uh, which is now becoming due. Um, part one was just completed by the Department of Health and city staff, actually. Um, and, and then part one was basically the general determine what needs to be updated in part two and, and completed. And so now that that task was completed, uh, part two is pretty much already underway. I believe there's already a public hearing getting scheduled for early in January. Um, there's already been a few meetings on this, and, uh, and basically this memo here lays out kind of the eleven primary tasks that are all required. Um, it's reasonably extensive, but because we already have done the first one ten years ago, this is re-updating all of the different elements, making sure they're all complying with current standards, and, uh, and we won't have to do it for another ten years, so. It's pretty much just getting that approval to, to continue to work on this and, and move through the process.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Gordon and seconded by Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Uh, lastly, before we move on to the consent agenda, um, I myself am gonna make a motion to redact uh, the voting that we did on the... Mike, you're gonna have to, because this one I don't, the coal I'm not worried about. But what about the other three here? Which one did we have the discussion of? Was it the final budget? The tax levy, correct?
Not 212, not 213, 211, yes.
And 210.
And... Yeah, two, my recollection is actually 210.
And 211.
Yeah, 210 ended up being washed. There was technically an underlying difference, right? Because we're gonna be basically swapping revenues there. Um, so we had a levy change, but that didn't affect the general fund. We ended up wearing that swap, so.
So.
Yeah, it was a different detail, but not within the resolution.
Okay, so on the four that we voted on last meeting, um, the coal I'm not worried about, nor am I worried about the enterprise fund budget. The ones that, uh, I wanna redact are the, uh, final budget and the, uh, final 2022 tax levy. Um, and I'll just simply say that because the reason I'm gonna request this motion and hopefully get a second is, uh, it went four zero, and I was a little flustered, I'll admit, and went for something that I should not have. It's probably not gonna change anything, but it's gonna go on record that, that what was different.
I'm not sure what we're trying to do here.
May I clarify?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, thank you. I believe what you're requesting is to motion for, to rescind action from the 1206 meeting for the resolutions you're mentioning, and you're requesting to re-vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Just for the record.
Well, so, well, then if we open that up here, and let's say Steve motions to let it go through, and it's due to two, what's gonna happen here? Because Steve wasn't there that night, so we don't know how that vote's gonna, gonna play unless.
The only I could say about what I, what I understand is for many years, Mr. Becker's been telling us, we don't wanna see double-digit influxations of taxes. Going up or going down? And if you go back and you look at previous mayors, I'm not gonna say any, any specific one, you'll look at, at election time, it went down twenty-three percent. The year after the election, it went up thirteen percent. That's a big swing. Not going up from twenty-three, but from twenty-three negative to a plus thirteen. And I think we've all seen that. And I'd rather see a small, as Mr. Becker's always said, that you're better off to have that small influx, rather than big dips, big climbs, big dips, big climb, whatever. That's not a good thing to do. Because at some point, we are going to end up paying the fight. That's just like we got stuck with this maintenance, you know, street maintenance program where we had to put a lot of money into it to get it back going to where it should have been, because that was always taken out of the budget to make taxes flat or drop taxes. And then, all of a sudden now, instead of having taxes stay like this, they go like this, because we've had to put that money back in to do the street maintenance program. So I, I myself, I can't argue any way other than that, other seeing that big decrease, I would not wanna see that. Personally.
The only thing that we changed on that budget from last time was we took the dynamic sign and took that hundred and forty thousand out of the way there, and then we had the, we're still doing the splash pad, and then we took the two hundred and eighteen thousand that was gonna come from the general lobby and just basically said, well, we're only gonna spend the money we have in park dedication funds for the splash pads. So I mean, that was the two changes that we made, that got us from a little under a three percent decrease to nearly an eleven percent decrease. So I mean, when we're talking about, you know, if you guys wanna rescind that, and then it's gonna, you know, and I guess I didn't get an answer to my question as far as how the vote would go, if it's tied, but.
First, I'd like to just clarify, Mayor, for the record, you're not requesting to change what was approved in the budget. You're requesting a motion to change your vote. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So if we agree about him to change his vote, so we're voting on if he can change his vote or not?
So if the, the mayor motioned this, if he gets a second and it passes, he breaks the tie on a four, um, then you re-vote.
So we have to re-vote, you have to re-vote on the whole thing?
We have to re-vote on the resolutions that were passed because they went as a package.
So it's not, it's not just that Jeff gets to change his vote, so it's three one?
That's what it would be.
That's what it would be.
That's what he's requesting to do.
So if it's two-two, what happens then?
No, it can't.
As far as his vote, so he wouldn't get to change his vote, as they were saying?
If it's two-two, the mayor will break the tie, and we'll vote to a re-vote for the resolutions that he mentioned.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Well, so it's.
I'm not looking to change anything you've done.
But, but which?
Well, that's not what you're saying, is it?
So I'm saying he's only, he's only requesting to change his vote. He's not requesting to change the resolutions content.
Right.
So you're sticking with your resolution?
He's requesting to vote those resolutions down, so that they would pass on a.
Right.
Three one.
But it, it would also have to be re-voted on.
He, he's worried about because Steve's here now, too.
I see.
So, so Steve would have to re-vote as well, and we don't know which way Steve voted last time, so we couldn't reopen it up and have to change it again.
I was never burned your, correct, I'm sorry. I do not understand that. Yes, if we reopen it up.
So potentially we could reopen this up to rehash what we did last time. So which, and what we did last time. So potentially we could reopen this up to rehash what we did last time, so which, and what we did last time, and I had a lady call me the day, the day after that, she didn't know anything about that meeting, but she just wanted to discuss her tax situation. She lives over on, I forget exactly, but the, kind of the older folks neighborhood behind Mobile there. And she's on a fixed income, and her taxes are through the roof. And just those changes that we made the other day, it was a savings of roughly a hundred and fifteen thousand, a hundred and fifteen dollars for her for next year. You know, I mean, that doesn't sound like much, but when you're on social security, and I think she was eighty-seven years old, that's a hundred and fifteen dollars. It's, it's, it matters to people. It's not monopoly money, you know? And all we did was say, we're gonna wait to do the dynamic sign, and we, we still put ten thousand there to get the easement, and we still, you know, we still are doing the splash pad, we're just doing it at a we're only using park dedication funds, which we have like three hundred and fifty thousand, I think, for that, and so so to try to open this back up and try to make a change to where we're, we're redoing what we did last time, I'm not in favor of it all. I think we've, we've made some good positive changes that, that I think are, are a positive result for our residents and lower taxes.
I do have a question, Ms. Wood. So if we do vote on this, whatever the vote turns out, if it's allowed the, the mayor to change his vote, then we're gonna allow Councilman Lundin to? So if that goes two-two, what happens if this now, does that change the whole thing, where he's resolved, it's, it's a tie, and what happens if the mayor gets a vote?
Mayor breaks the tie.
So he breaks the tie on that?
So here's, here's what I would, I would say. I wasn't here for that. So I can't argue either way, other than I already stated my fact.
Right.
If he wants to allow him to change his vote, I'm not asking to have a revote. He's asking to change his vote on it. And I think it's only fair. I was not here, same situation, I wasn't here earlier, and I got stuck working late. So I'm not, I'm not gonna want, I don't wanna go through all the rehash of it either. It is what it is. I didn't have a say in the first one. I don't know why I would have to have a say in this one. If he wants to change his vote, I'd be more willing to say, allow him to change his vote, so it's going on record that he changed his vote at that point.
And I'm not gonna argue with you, but I've had the opposite end of the coin. The way it was stated to me is now you're essentially gonna put a concrete slab with a sprinkler on it, is what you're gonna do for what this community wanted.
For three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's the comment that I've gotten.
Well, I'm not, I'm not doubting that, but three hundred and fifty, go ahead, you speak to it.
About three hundred and fifty.
Oh, you, you go.
Okay, I just can't imagine we're gonna have a sprinkler, a concrete pad with splinters on it for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
It's the comment I got, and I'm not gonna argue either way.
Plus it's not only three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's also three hundred and fifty thousand dollars matching sponge from the
What do you, three hundred thousand for the grant we got, we have to
Okay, I totally agree.
Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it's not, it's gonna be a whole lot more than a concrete pad, so. But I guess I'm not in favor of opening up for, for any more discussion, but.
I'm not either. I'm gonna vote against it, but.
I'm just saying, is if it's allow him to change his vote, I would not be opposed to that and not going to further discussion. You understand what I'm saying?
So essentially, it's gonna go two to one, is what he's saying. It's still gonna pass.
But then we gotta, but then we gotta, okay.
No, we don't have to.
We don't have to.
Okay, great.
It's going on record that I voted against it. It's all looking for.
Okay.
Does that work, Ms. Wood?
Sure. Two things I'm hearing. One is if, if he does get a motion, it sounds like Councilman Burgley and you are saying that you will abstain?
Yes.
The other option is if he doesn't get the second, he still theoretically could have been abstaining goal by making it known as a statement on the record.
Then it's true.
He would rather have voted it down.
I'm good either way at this point.
And then he does not need a vote. Here we go.
So if I'm not gonna get the second, then we'll move on. It's on record.
Still put it on record that he
And I've mentioned it.
Yes, we will make it as part of the record that the mayor requested a revote and wanted to vote the resolutions as he stated, as a name.
Thank you. Anything in the consent agenda that we need to discuss?
I just wanted to say thank you to Culvers for donating that eight hundred and five dollars for the food department to get the, the non-budgeted safety items, and that's pretty awesome of, of business to do that.
Well, we, we had, what, three caps? Four?
Yeah, I mean, that was great for Culvers, he doesn't have to reach out to us and want it.
Essentially, that kind of stemmed off of, we had an officer we took from Cambridge, and that's, he did it for them then. And when he came here, they reached out to us because he works here now, and and he still ran the program, and there was four officers that went up there and essentially served the food to the guests, and I swear our lieutenant could get a part-time job serving food, because he, he had a blast doing it, so. I would agree with that. Thanks to Culvers for doing that, but
Absolutely.
Lieutenant McCarty did work for eight hundred and fifteen dollars, by all means. I went there and ate dinner that night, and he was like a little kid in a candy store. Anything else we need to discuss in there? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Burgley.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries four zero. Anything else, Ms. Wood?
Oh, Mayor, thank you, that was all.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Burgley.
Second.
Second by Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries four zero. Therefore, we stand adjourned. It doesn't work though, if you talk into it.